Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily.
Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Madison Board of Education School Board meeting for February 9th, 2023 to order. Tonight, we're happy to have Mr. Alex Emmons, 8th grader at Liberty, to come forward and lead us into the pledge of allegiance, please. Fuel eyes.
I pledge allegiance to this land, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alex. Ms. King, roll call, please. Here.
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 Board, if you'll take a moment and review the agenda. I need a motion and a second.
So move.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Lesman and a second by Mr. Overkesh. All those in favor of the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? The agenda passes. Dr. Nichols, we'll move right into presentations.
All right, Mr. President. I'm going to invite Ms. Lambert to come forward. She's got several groups. One of them says the cheerleaders, but I think they're in Orlando at the national competition. And so, we'll have to, we'll have to bring them back when they get back. They're, they're there now, so Ms. Lambert, we'll let you start.
Yes, thank you. In fact, I met with our cheerleaders yesterday morning at 5:45 before they left. So, yeah. At this time, we have our, our band directors. And if you would please join me up here, that's Mr. Smart and also Ms. Thomas. We are so grateful to have our band directors here. And we have three of our drum majors. So, ladies, if you could also join us up here. You can see the, the trophies and there's a belt, which is really interesting to me. It almost looks like a-
Yeah, grab it and bring it up.
Wrestling belt, but it's a band belt.
Yes.
And these are some of the awards that our band, they have brought home first semester. So, Ms. Thomas, if you could please share about our awards.
Absolutely. She took my wrestling belt joke, so I'll, I'll move on. Thank you so much for allowing us to be here and recognizing that the hard work of these students and all of our students from the fall. This was arguably one of our best seasons, and it definitely was the most award-winning season that I've ever had as a director. Here's my 11th season at Bob Jones, so. And it was in large part due to the, just the outstanding work of our students. It was not only our hardest show visually, but our hardest show musically. And just a fun fact, it also is a completely different show than any one that you've ever seen on a Friday night football game. So, so we're extremely excited and proud of their hard work. Just to detail what you're seeing, they competed four times, and we won grand champion three out of the four times. And that resulted in, in beating around 40 different bands from Tennessee and Alabama. So, the belt was from the Riverdale competition in Murfreesboro, Tennessee. And we not only won our division, which is what that belt is for, but we were overall grand champion at that, which was our second competition. The state championship map trophy was from the Class 7A marching band championship, where we were champions of that, Class 7A. That's the first time that we have won that. We've competed five times. And, and we finally took home the trophy. So, we're excited about that. And then the large one was from the Cold Water Classic at Deshler High School, where they beat over 25 other bands. And that was kind of a last-minute switch. We switched the day before we left. Our, one of our competitions was canceled. And then I got on the phone and found that one, and, and they showed up. And not only won grand champion, but they also had a group of band parents sitting in the stands that voted on most entertaining band of the day, and we won that as well. So, not only did we receive the top score, but they also received the most entertaining, which is, I, I think, pretty equal their award. So, we're extremely excited for them, for their hard work, for how difficult this show was and how fun it was. It was loosely based on Hocus Pocus, the movie. So, we had a big cauldron and a big book, and it was just a lot of fun. So, I wanted to invite Emma to speak from a student's perspective.
Thank you. So, as she said, my name is Emma. I have been in the band for all four years of high school. I was drum major for two of those years. And this show is unlike anything I've ever experienced. Just the effect, I mean, the cauldron took up a big part of the feel. I've just never seen a prop that big. But one of the things I'll always remember is after we won state is just the, the happiness from the band, because we've never won state before that I've been here, like Ms. Thomas said. And the show was just really fun. It was hard at times, but I mean, it was one of the coolest things I've ever been part of experience. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just, I just add, I can't say anymore than Ms. Thomas already did with just how proud we are of the achievements of the students. But just how grateful we are of all the parents and volunteer supports, the administration and their support of everything we do. And it's just, it just makes kind of what they do just even that much more fulfilling. We get to see kind of them shine outside of the classroom. And it's just a really cool experience to see kind of them get excited and light up even when they have to work hard throughout band camp and everything. They kind of get that, that satisfaction there at the end. So, it was just a great overall season.
Well, first of all, congratulations. You had a great fall and a great show. And folks may not realize, but every day, all the equipment has to be taken out and across the street and under the tunnel and set up over on the side. And then it has to go back. And, and everybody works every day, starting in the summer and through band camp and, and all of those hard practices and into heat. And, and, but it all was worthwhile. And a lot of people may not realize that, that our bands do something a little different than most bands. They have a very entertaining halftime show on Friday night. Had, had a, had a game show this year, electronic game show, a game on, Ms. Lambert. And I, I still hear that di-di-di-di-di in my sleep. And I know you do, and Mr. Smart will always think about that show. It will, the electronics that go with it. But, and then you have your competition show, and that's double work. It is. It's double work. And so, I'm just very proud of the work. And I'm sure that when you changed at the last minute and went over there to the, to the contest, you made lots of friends who had already figured out, you know, band directors, y'all may not know this, but band director scout some, some, not all, some scout where they want to go in a contest. And if they thought Bob Jones was going to show up, they probably would have gone somewhere else. And then, then lo and behold, there they are. And that sure makes for a rainy day, literally. So, but we're very proud of you all and what you do. And, and we know now that marching season's over. Y'all just sit around and play checkers. That's what people used to ask me when I was a band director. What do y'all do in the spring and the winter? Well, we do a lot of hard work, because I know you have a trip on the agenda tonight to Hattiesburg to do.
Yeah, we, we have our indoor winds and our indoor drum line that will be competing at a WGI regional there. And indoor guards practicing right now, and so it's, it doesn't stop. Plus, all of our concert ensembles are maintaining and getting ready for MPA in a few weeks, so.
Three weeks from today. Well, we're very proud of all of you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Board?
Thank you. Congratulations.
Oh, wait. John Peck will want you to come up here and have a picture.
With all your hardware, yes.
Ms. Thomas, she gonna wear the belt or something, right? May Ms. Lambert, Ms. Lambert, can I wear the belt? I would really like to wear the belt. I, I think the belt, just lay it over your shoulder, you know? There you go.
That's a good one. Congratulations.
Ms. Thomas, here's a certificate from the board for you all. We appreciate all that you do. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Let's see. Ms. Lambert, you're still up, I think, right? You have Presidential Scholars.
Yes, yes. I didn't know whether-
No, we're doing James Clemens the next time, I think.
Wonderful. Yes, so-
It's all Bob Jones tonight.
Oh, thank you, sir. I mean, that's the way we always feel, but thank you so much for saying that. I mean, just being honest.
It was a softball, I think, or two.
Yes, sir. So, the U.S. Presidential Scholar Program was established in 1964, and it is by invitation only. So, students do not apply to be a U.S. Presidential Scholar, but they are invited. So, we have a couple of students here. We actually have seven students at Bob Jones. Seven from one high school that have been invited to be U.S. Presidential, which is absolutely amazing. We have three with us, because the other four are- We have two that are sick. We have one that is at tennis. And another that is out as sick as well. In fact, one that is sick is also on the basketball team. Did not get to play last night, but he is one of those. Come on up, ladies. We have our seven.
I love it. Mr. Peum, can you see them? Do they need to turn and face the camera?
Okay. There we go. We have Thais, Arslan Bekoff. We have Nia Shapayd. Puja Shapayd, who, Puja's sick. We have Kennedy Gore, Justin Pan, who is out tonight. He is sick. Ashwin Prabakar, he's on our tennis team, and Lillian Q. And so, these, these students are very active in our, throughout our whole campus. They are on our scholars team. They are on various teams. And, and tennis team, basketball team. So, they are so plugged into Bob Jones. It is just amazing. They are leaders in their own right, and not just at Bob Jones, but obviously in the nation. So, I'm just very, very proud. U.S. Presidential is, and James Clemens, of course, also has some. I'm not sure that they have seven, but we have seven. But we are very, very proud, very, very proud of our U.S. Presidential's. So, and the, they are at the semifinal level right now. The number of Presidential, I believe it's 161 across the nation. And so, that will be announced at a later time. And so, we are at the semifinal range right now. Thank you, ladies.
Well, congratulations. And we're very proud of all of you and your, and your work, so congratulations.
Congratulations.
But we'll let them know they don't, because then that'll get them fired up for next year. There's, you know, nothing, always a little competitiveness amongst all of y'all, I notice. Yes, just a little. It's a good thing, it is.
Dr. Nichols, will that close presentations for tonight?
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
All right. Now is the time in the board meeting for public comments. If anyone has signed up earlier before the board, then now is your time to address, Ms. King. No one? No one has signed up tonight, so we will close public comments for this evening, and we will move straight to business action items. Dr. Nichols.
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for your approval of consent agenda containing the following items. A, minutes 23-02, January 23rd of 2023. An agreement with special education parents relative to a provision of free and appropriate public education. That, that's B. Minutes was, were A. C is a bid, 2023-04. This is journey band equipment. The lowest bid, Gadsden Music Company presented responsive bid, $290,918.47. D, field request trip for Bob Jones High School band students to attend competition in Hattiesburg, Mississippi. E, handle with care agreement buy-in between the City Board of Education, City of Madison Police Department, National Children's Advocacy Center, focusing on notification to the school by law enforcement when a child is exposed to trauma in the home or in the community, helping us to handle with care as they return to school. F, an increase in the salary, scale, and number of days worked from 202 to 212 for supervising nurse position, stay competitive in surrounding district. G, an action authorizing the superintendent, his or her designated to enter in short-term contracts of no more than one month in their duration to temporarily fill these vacancies for advertisements that have been posted. These will serve with one being the best interest of the district to be filled. Two, the amount would not exceed the hourly rate or monthly salary of the posted position. Three, no contract may be used to fill a position that is direct report to the superintendent. And four, all such contracts shall be subject to ratification by the board at its next meeting. And H, a service agreement buy-in between the City Board of Education and Southern Jam Security, Inc., to advise, assist, and support security beginning February 13th of 2023 through May 25th of 2023, as described in the agreement. And finally, I, an update to the dual enrollment policy for the Madison City Schools.
Board, the superintendent has recommended approval of the consent agenda, consent agenda items, A through I. Can I have a motion and a second?
So move.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Newberry and a second by Ms. Lesman. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Consent agenda passes. Dr. Nichols.
Excuse me just a moment. At this time, I'd ask Mrs. Williams to come forward and present the financial and bank reconciliation statements for December 2022.
Good evening, board and Dr. Nichols. I'm presenting the December 2022 financial statements. We should be at 25%. Our revenues are at 31%, and our expenditures are at 20%.
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for approval the December 2022 financial and bank reconciliation statements for Madison City Schools as presented by Ms. Williams.
Board, the superintendent recommends approval of the December 2022 financial statements for Madison City Schools. Can I have a motion and a second?
So move. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Cummings and a second by Mr. Overkesh. Discussion? We did have a financial committee meeting, which all board members attended before, before immediately preceding this, this meeting tonight, where Ms. Williams went over the financial statements and the bank reconciliation statements. We did note that, that, that revenues can continue to increase slightly. And, and as you reported, our expenses were slightly down, less than 25% of the budget right now. Any other comments? Call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes. Dr. Nichols.
I'll ask Mrs. Williams to present amendment to the budget of December 2022.
Okay, this board is December 2022, the budget amendment. There was just one change. There was an increase of $2 million to our revenues. And then we ended the month at 49.44 operating days.
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for approval the December 2022 budget amendment as presented by Ms. Williams.
Board, the superintendent recommends approval of the December 2022 budget amendment for Madison City Schools. Can I have a motion and a second?
So move. Second.
Motion by Mr. Cummings and a second by Mr. Overkesh. Any comments? Discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Williams. Dr. Nichols.
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend, oh, excuse me, I present to you, not I recommend yet, I present to you a first reading of policy 4.9, political activity, and 7.13, school wellness. These will be sent out by all organizations, feedback taken, and brought back to you. These come from the Policy Committee.
Thank you, Dr. Nichols. So, there will be no, no motions and no vote on this, as this is the first reading. But can we have, I believe, Mr. Newberry to speak on the, these recommendations coming out of the Policy Committee?
Oh, yeah, sure. So, the political activity, one is due to a change, or either a change in the law or a new law that's effective January 1st. Prior, if the, the, the board could allow the use of board property and resources to promote ballot initiatives, like tax referendums that were deemed, that furthered the purpose of the school. The law has changed. That doesn't allow us to do that. So, we're changing our policy to reflect that we can't do that. And the other changes, there's, I think it's just generally cleaning up the, that section of the policy manual.
So, so previously, if it was to the betterment of education, we were allowed to advocate for it.
Correct.
And now we're not allowed to have a position?
Correct. We can't say vote, vote for this. I think the most we can do is state what the ballot initiative is. But we can't advocate to vote for, for the populace to vote yes or no.
You can't spend public funds to do it.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Well, you could, but you could inform and provide information for that matter, but you can't expend public funds to support or oppose a ballot initiative.
But it does not change, am I correct, Mr. Sanders, the person's ability as an individual outside of their role to have a position that they could have on, on that, or to advocate for it, but we, as a, as a body.
This applies to employees. It's not against-
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
But it doesn't limit board members' position, taking a position publicly or not, but it would affect your ability to expend public funds to support or oppose a ballot initiative. But you rarely did, I mean, I don't recall that you've ever done, frankly, anyway.
Right. Yeah, it would, yeah, I can't recall that we've ever expended public funds on that. But how, how hair-splitting is that? Is using, using a forum and then broadcasting that, is that, would that be considered? Would that be in the gray area?
Well, it's, we're trying to, to make sure you don't run afoul of law. I mean, we have situations past where the superintendent's probably been more actively involved in promoting-
Sure.
-an outcome, then you probably shouldn't be under the new law. Because questionable if he's spending public funds because he gets paid salary while he's advocating. But that doesn't affect certainly board members that have been paying him. For example.
Any resources, I know we've had a thing in the past where a marquee in front of us- school aggravated somebody when it said, remember to vote.
Right.
See, I mean, you know, resources in general, it kind of gets to be a gray area.
And that, I really don't think would violate this, because you're not advocating for or against a position, you're just promoting the notion of the movie, but it's just to clean up some things because of the previous policy.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Not written with this new statute in mind.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Just remind me, it seemed like the only thing we have done as a system is put vote to date, is that correct? We never really took a position, have we?
I think that's correct.
Obviously, we have had tax votes before, where the superintendent took a pretty active role in promoting one outcome or the other, and that, I think, could be called a question of how much you were actively involved while on duty.
And the boards had forums for the millage increase.
But you could have forums and discuss it and impart information to the public about the impact of failing to adopt something or adopting, and what you might do if you get the money, or what may happen if you don't get the money. That's still just providing information. It's a fine line, maybe law.
Sure.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Maybe down the road somewhere, but it's, previously, there'd been some Attorney General's opinions that said you could even spend public money for polling, campaigning, doing things publicly. Now, you didn't. Typically, what would happen is you'd get a committee, and they'd raise money, and that really wouldn't change. You can just, you know, you can still provide information.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
In the full extent that you can participate in any political activity as an individual, you can't spend public money to do a campaign.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sarge.
Then the second one is the school wellness policy. This has been a policy at the school level, but there's been some turnover. We have new principals and stuff, and so we wanted to take this opportunity to basically elevate this to the district's policy manual. So this is just basically stating that we have a school wellness program, we will abide by it, and provide nutritious meals, et cetera.
Yeah, and possibly restart the committees on wellness again. Apparently, that used to be ongoing.
Excellent, thank you. Any other questions or discussion, Board? Thank you, Mr. Newberry and Ms. Lesman. And again, there's no action on this tonight. It will be placed on our website for access, correct, Mr. Peck? And sent out to MEA and posted in our buildings. All right, we will move on to, does that, I believe that ends business actions, we'll move into personnel actions. Dr. Nichols.
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for approval, list of substitutes for Madison City Schools.
Board, the superintendent recommends approval of a list of substitutes for Madison City Schools. Can this be taken as a group?
This is a demonstration.
The group find, can I have a motion and a second?
So move.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Lesman and a second by Mr. Newberry. Any discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes. Dr. Nichols.
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for your approval of supplemental contracts for work performed for Madison City Schools.
Board, the superintendent recommends approval of the supplemental contracts that you have before you. Can these be taken as a group?
Wirecast.
The group find, can I have a motion and a second?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Overcash and a second by Ms. Lesman. Any discussion?
Mr. President, just a reminder, many of these are pretty standard. We have some winter clinicians for our band programs and their indoor performing groups that they, the school, pay at the school level. We also have some asynchronous and synchronous summer programs. I would assume, if I'm right, Mrs. Williams and Ms. Gray, that this has come at the last of our ESER funds that we'll be using for those programs. Dr. Donaldson, where we're doing the interventions and those things in the summer, so otherwise, the EL camp, those are programs that we do each summer, and go ahead and get those started and get those organized for the summer. So, pretty standard for this time of the year.
Excellent. Anything further? Call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes. Dr. Nichols.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Personnel actions.
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for approval, the remainder of the personnel action.
Board, the superintendent recommends the personnel actions that you have before you. Can these be taken as a group? The group find, can I have a?
Lee, holler out there and tell Sergeant Dawes, we've given him a shout. Appreciate our SROs. This is actually SRO appreciation month, so. Working with transcripts, and just the myriad of things that counselors do, and we certainly are blessed in Madison to have outstanding counselors across our district that help our students make curriculum decisions and. Status, certainly appreciate. Dr. Donaldson worked on that. We also got a CTE middle grades innovation grant for $50,000. And Ms. Powell worked on that to play a role in preparing and getting the material. We do, and so we will be working on that. We set an action plan on that, as well as several of our principals and administrators have gone through a professional learning unit directed by Dr. Dooley on EL education My ears are still ringing. As Lady Liberty came and talked about the Statue of Liberty and the Constitution and those things, and I certainly appreciate our partnership on that. And we're on track journeys, moving along. As you all know, we took a little tour the other day and. Applaud him for his service in the Scouts and the dedication it takes to work to become an Eagle Scout, and so congratulations, and we look forward to finding out the day when you've completed all that, and you have.
...